Twenty twenty one and first on the agenda is Ms. Solano with city updates. Ms. Solano.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Mayor Gradisar. I have a brief updates this evening and it is all with respect to the coronavirus. Earlier today, the mayor was notified by Randy Evans, the health director, that the state had notified him that effective Wednesday morning, April the seventh at six A M. The state will be moving Pueblo to yellow on the dial backward because of the increase in positive case counts. That what that will mean for five star and non five star businesses and restaurants will all be clarified within the next couple of days. But our positive case counts have been increasing over the past seven consecutive days. So the state will be moving Pueblo. As of this morning, the governor also released a press release that the mask order was extended for another thirty days. So that will require our masks in the in the building and at work by all employees and anyone else in a public building. This morning in the COVID update meeting with the health department, Parker reported that they had twenty five COVID patients at the hospital this morning. So that patient count has been increasing over the last seven days, a few at a time as well. And the last update for today with respect to COVID is that the governor also announced that FEMA would be sponsoring a federal community vaccination site in Pueblo. A new acronym, C V S for Community Vaccination Site, beginning next Monday. And the site will still be at the Colorado State Fairgrounds. It is a pilot extended to initially run for eight weeks and then they make a determination after that. And the nice thing for Pueblo residents is that the vaccinations would increase from seventeen hundred per day up to three thousand per day very quickly after their initial arrival next week. And those are the five updates that I have with respect to COVID this evening. And do you have any questions?
I have one question right away is that what's the confusion on five star businesses? Obviously, the rules have always been that if there if we go to a higher level, they get to operate at the lower level. What would make that change?
I don't believe there's confusion. I think they're just waiting for clarification to be released.
Okay, but I don't know what clarification there would be.
Well, my understanding is that once, once we move to level yellow, that the five star restaurants, for instance, will be allowed to operate at a hundred percent capacity, provided they can maintain that six feet of social distancing between them. The other restaurants that are not five star certified will go back to the fifty percent capacity.
Okay, that's how you understand it?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm good with that. Any other question? Counselor Flores?
As I was driving down here, there was a thing on K O A indicating that the Colorado State Fair was also going to be utilized by FEMA to allow people from the Arkansas Valley now. He cited off all the counties. It was quite a few. So did you hear that too?
It is a regional.
Regional.
Regional site. And they will be also closing off Mesa Avenue between Prairie and the following street, just like one block long, so it can facilitate entrance into the fairground.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Solano. We moved to number two on the agenda, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. Mayor Gradisar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members of Council. Wanted to spend a few minutes speaking with you tonight about the American Rescue Plan Act. Darrell, if you'd put that PowerPoint up. You should each have a copy, I hope, of the presentation in front of you there. You'll see as we've begun to prepare for this, we've got seven pillars of focus in Pueblo that we've got there. First is individuals and households on the left hand side, tourism and hospitality, youth, nonprofits, small businesses, infrastructure and community resilience. This is how we the project structure is how we envision bringing these projects forward and to fruition. We're getting input from Mayor's Youth Council, from internal city task force and to the town halls that we are scheduling that'll provide input to the mayor's office and to city council. In the mayor's office, we have are establishing working groups. We put together a leadership team that's begun working through this and we came up with these working groups of individuals to start working on those seven pillars there to identify projects and possibilities for funding there. As we look at this, there are some things we think need to be done immediately in the next four to six months, if not sooner. And the other is some sustainable reform over a longer period of time. These are this is from a presentation that Ms. Solano and I attended from Bluebird Philanthropies talking about this. And I'm not going to read that to you, but I will give you that. You can read it at your leisure with respect to strategies to sequence and optimize these funds. I think what you need to understand is that these are once in a lifetime opportunities for these funds to come to Pueblo. And not only is the city of Pueblo getting these funds, the county of Pueblo is getting a similar amount. The school districts are also getting some funds for for certain activities. And the state is getting funds for certain activities. One of the things we want to try to do is make certain that we are coordinating our efforts so that we're not duplicating matters. The amount that Pueblo is expected to get is thirty six point seven million dollars. We haven't gotten any of it yet. You'll see later on in the presentation how we expect to get it. But the way we envision this is once those funds arrive, we will present an ordinance to the city council to accept budget and appropriate funds for for that, the amount of thirty six point seven million dollars or the half that we get right now upfront, which is eighteen million something. And obviously, that depends on when we get received the funds. What our plan is at the present time is as we draw funds out of that that have been appropriated by council, we'll come back to council with a resolution saying that we want to spend blank amount for blank project and make that available for that project. So we anticipate we'd come back. There's some definitions there. Pueblo is obviously a metropolitan city under the ARPA Act. And forty five billion dollars in the ARPA Act was set aside for metropolitan cities. The next page deals with the timing of the first tranche. You'll see should be sixty days after March the eleventh, which is the date that this plan was enacted. We should get our first tranche of money. That's should be half of the allocation that's determined to be Pueblo's allocation. Second tranche is going to be twelve months after the date on which the first tranche is played. So we're going to get half now, basically half in twelve months. The funds have to be used by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And there are basically four areas where you're allowed to use the funds. A, which is the first area is to respond to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus or its negative economic impacts. And then you'll see there the highlighted portion indicates that that includes assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. We are awaiting, obviously, not only the funds, but we're awaiting guidance from the Treasury Department with respect to their guidance and rules and regulations with respect to, you know, what qualifies under each of these areas. The second area that you can spend money is to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the city that are performing those essential services or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. So obviously, this is another one where we're awaiting guidance to see if it can be retroactive. As you know, both the police and fire departments postponed their bargain for raises for twenty twenty one. And I sort of view this as a way to perhaps make them whole for that by adding an hourly incentive to the hours that they work in twenty twenty one or if allowed, the hours that they did work from March of twenty twenty to March of twenty twenty one and paying that to them in a lump sum payment. But again, that's we're awaiting guidance from the Treasury Department on that to see how that those funds can be used. See, and this is an important one for the city and it requires guidance as well that we can use these funds to provide for government services to the extent there was a reduction in revenue of the city due to COVID nineteen relative to the revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the metropolitan city prior to the emergency. Well, that might be a difficult one for us to meet, depending on what the rules and regulations are, because we have to compare the money we received in twenty twenty to the money we received in twenty nineteen. And as you know, for our sales tax at least, the sales tax collections for twenty twenty exceeded the sales tax collections for twenty nineteen. So there are other areas of the budget where that wasn't the case. So we're awaiting that guidance from the Treasury to see if we can make it up in some of those specific categories or whether it has to be, when you look at the budget as a whole, is that how that determination is made? So that wouldn't be advantageous to us for allowing us to provide city services and to use that money for that because we wouldn't qualify in that instance. Then finally, C or D is to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. So in terms of capital projects and broadband and and infrastructure, they were pretty limited in what that can be used for, water, sewer and broadband. So it's unlikely that these could be used to build or repair streets, for instance. I know there have been some requests for some of this money to put in streets for developers and those kind of things. Again, depending on what the guidance is we get from the Department of the Treasury, we'll have a lot better idea whether those are an appropriate use of those funds. There's a definition there of eligible workers eligible workers for the purposes of the premium pay, you know, that are necessary to maintain the continuity of operations. Pretty clear to me that police and fire employees would would fit in that category. And then this is premium pay. It's determined how much that could be. Can't exceed twenty five thousand dollars per single eligible worker and it can't be more than thirteen dollars an hour for premium pay. So wanted to sort of set forth the broad parameters there. The governor has scheduled a series of town halls, if you will, or sessions around. We're doing the same thing in the city of Pueblo. And for next week, we're going to have five town halls, basically, next week in different parts of the city. You'll all be getting an invitation to attend those town halls either in your area of the community or attend all of them, if you will. But the first is going to be on April the twentieth at ten A M. At the Steelworks Museum over in Bessemer. April the twentieth at six P M. At Rawlings Library. April the twenty first at six P M. At Lahimpay Youth Sports at twenty eight oh four East Twelve Street. April twenty second at six P M. We're going to do it on Zoom. Try to do a Zoom meeting for people that can't get out physically and they can attend the meeting on Zoom. On April twenty third at ten A M. At Saint Pius the Tenth Catholic Church at thirty one thirty Morris Avenue. What we want, as I indicated at the outset, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity for us to put this money to use for Pueblo and we want to get as many ideas and as much input from the citizens of this community about what they think this money ought to be used for and see whether or not those ideas are compatible with what the guidance is that we get from the Treasury as we move this forward. We're working on some specific proposals, but as again, we're we're sort of waiting on that guidance. But part of it is we want to get this input from the community about, you know, the question is sort of a list of questions have been prepared, but you know, if you had a million dollars, what would you do to improve the city? You know, and just let people brainstorm about that a little bit. And we did that with our youth council and they, you know, raised all kinds of things about homeless people, about, you know, services to them and those kind of things. They thought that's where some money ought to go in terms of taking care of that. So I'm sure we're going to get a wide variety of issues. And as I say, as we come back before the money is spent, we'll be coming back to council and saying, okay, this is what the plan is and this is what we need for this this particular project. So happy to answer any questions I can at this point at least.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions? Counselor Schelling?
Nick, we'll, if we get this money and we can use it for sewer and water, is it possible to use it and give some relief to the sewer to the rate payers for the sewer and water stuff and do some capital improvements? Or is there any way to, I guess we can expand and do what Nancy needs done or whatever. But is there any way to help the rate payers by giving them a break like Black Hills did or anything like anything like that? Just a thought.
Sure, I would I would expect that 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 would be viewed as, you know, aid to individuals or households by reducing their sewer or water piece.
Okay, and that's last question. I talked to you before about the cleanup along the fountain from Caesar Chavez Bridge going over there and all the way down. Can any of this money be used as an incentive to incentivize those companies to use it for cleanup along the fountain related by their stores? Again, another question that if you can't answer it now, this is fine, but just a thought.
One of the things I've picked around at least in my own head is whether we could use this to help a nonprofit hire homeless people to clean up there in those areas. You know, I know other communities, not necessarily with these kind of funds, but have made money available to nonprofits. And we probably wouldn't want to do that rather than try to do it ourselves. So that they put some kind of program in place, we give them a trash bag and they bring it back on a certain day and you pay them so much a pound or so much a bag and you have a dumpster there where they can put the stuff in and sort of a job, if you will, for the homeless in that area, whether it's cleaning up their own camps along the fountain or picking up, you know, in other parts of town. So we're in the process of working through some of those things.
I think you might want to talk to Stephen Meyer and see how that kind of thing worked out with helping out at Nature Center. It's really hard. God love everybody, but it really, they have no motivation to do that. I mean, the idea is great, however you work it out, it just.
Well, I the way I'd work it out probably is if you get paid by the pound or paid by the bag. If you don't have any motivation, you're not going to make any money. If they don't want to make any money, then, you know, obviously, money won't motivate them. But my experience has been that if you want to motivate people to do things, money is one of the ways you do that.
Well, the important answer to my question is yes, there should be some ability to help with that sort of thing. Thank you.
Counselor Flores? I just had a question about the whole process. Process of if we move ahead with doing our thing, including picking up the difference of where we thought we were going to be in two thousand twenty versus where we landed. Is the government going to do an actual audit at the end of this and try to figure out whether we did anything wrong or we picked the wrong project? And if that's.
I see legal counsel nodding yes that they will. Yeah, I would suspect that that would be the case. They have ten years to do the audit after the money is spent, so.
But but it seems to be.
We better do this right.
It's like it's like a moving moving target. In other words, if we can't get the money because there was no injury to the city as a result of sales tax, we then need to be strategic in putting the money where we can maximize it and justify it. Right, because if we go this way, we're going, you know, we don't want to get ourselves in trouble when it's audit time that we pick the wrong.
Yeah.
The wrong pillar, as you meant.
And I think I have indicated to you that we've been selected, the city of Pueblo has been selected to participate in an audit with respect to our care response. The state contract with a private accounting firm to audit selective entities, I guess, in terms of how they apply their their care response. We have, I think, responded on Friday, given them all of the documentation that CPA has requested. So we're confident that we've got those documents, that we've got those payments documented and that they're legitimate. But nevertheless, yeah, they'll probably audit this.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown? Because we didn't have the fair, even though our sales tax wasn't down, we weren't able to to use what we normally generated at the fair. Could we raise our?
You know, that that's what we're awaiting that guidance on, whether or not if we lost income in certain areas, can we use this to make that up? And I wish I could tell you what what the guidance is there. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we asked people, I had meetings last week with our federal delegation representatives of their offices in Denver and they think it's going to be in the next couple of weeks. But I think they're guessing just like we are in terms of how long it's going to take them to get this. Pardon me? Which meeting? Well, I met last week in Denver with the federal delegation. They're not coming down. No, no.
And answer the race question, C M L has a Zoom meeting this week with Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper on the on these funds. So you can, I've signed up for it. I mean, it's it's any C M L member can can get involved in that Zoom meeting. It's interesting that the PPP loans came out eight or nine months ago and they're still can't figure out how those are are working. And I know that from the business from a business standpoint. So I find it hard to believe that in two weeks they're going to come out with, you know, these guidelines, but it could happen. It could happen. They're very smart people that work there. Hopefully, by the time that the town halls come around, we'll know exactly where the money can be spent. And then those town halls can be very productive in the sense of here's where the money can be spent in those areas, which areas, those specific areas, what would you like to see done? Rather than be, you know, you're going to get people telling you they want you to buy houses. You get what I'm saying? Yeah, I do. So hopefully, hopefully that happens. So we're all not just speculating on, wow, I hope we get some money for this, get some money for that. Counselor Winner?
I guess I had a question back to Laura. Are they going to pull back on school attendance as well since we're rolling back?
There was no indication today, Counselor, that there was a pullback of school. I we heard from the governor last week that the mask extension was definitely with respect to schools still in session.
Okay, good.
Potentially that will increase another month until the until the K through twelve system is released for the summer.
Okay, all right.
We did hear this morning from CSU Pueblo that they had postponed their spring break until Monday, April sixteenth. And after the spring break week is over, they will convert to solely online classes to finish the semester.
Bummer. And then I just wanted to kind of piggyback what Bob's concern was with kind of hiring or kind of sort of hiring homeless people. I think what he was getting at is it's not really dependable. So if it's something that you really want cleaned up, I think it needs to be a little more aggressive than that. You know, those, a lot of those guys don't have jobs because they don't want jobs and a lot of them, I mean, they'll show up when they feel like it. So it's not, it's not super dependable. And then also I'd like to bring forth an ordinance as far as the five million that came from the half cent sales tax to forgive all of the loans that we did on that. We talked about it at one work session. Well, I'm bringing it up now to see if this would be supported at all. I'm getting blank stares, mouth breathing.
Counselor Flores? I thought that we we had talked about forgiving both sides, the nonprofit and the for profit. And it isn't the whole five million. I think it's a much smaller amount that took out the loans, right?
One and a half, maybe one point six. I'm trying to remember.
But I I thought the process involved looking at the nonprofits first. I don't think I heard that we had not wanted to bring, just to discuss it. I haven't made up my mind. That's a good thing. But I thought we were going to look at part two of this and at least discuss it.
Yeah, and I mean, we can get with the legal department, put a resolution to get or an ordinance together or whatever it takes. Would that be a resolution or an ordinance? Yeah, it would be an ordinance and yeah. You have to have a factual predicate, a legal predicate to cancel those loans. You just can't say, oh, they're all forgiven because we like you. They're going to have to do the same thing the nonprofits did. Show us your financials. Tell us how much you lost and and we'll look at. But yeah, we're dealing with taxpayer funds and so they're they're going to, there has to be an application process, I think, to vet these requests. And if it's legitimate, yeah, it's within your authority, but you've got to have evidence indicating that, yeah, they're in dire straits and this is appropriate. And one of the one of the issues that that caught my eye is that there was, you know, like some real estate companies that had taken out loans. It's hard for me to believe that a real estate company in this day and age is broke struggling mightily in this era of COVID. So, yeah, but I, you know, I'm with everybody else. I'd be more than happy to look at that. You know, my take on the whole deal was you're getting all this money and this money is to offset the effects of COVID on small business, nonprofits and so on and so forth. It just seems to me that, and I'm going to argue this till the cows come home, that the money from Petco or the half, it's not Petco's money, it's the half cent sales tax money should be reimbursed. It should be reimbursed wholeheartedly because this money is available to do exactly that, whether we forgive loans or or and obviously to spend thirty six million, I think you're going to have to open up grants again and and allow these companies who are still struggling through this whole process more money. So but I think it's an opportunity to make the half cent sales tax fund whole again through this whole whole process with the with this American Rescue Act and so on and so forth. And I know, Mayor, you have a whole different idea about that, but, you know, we can argue that another time. I'm just throwing that out there. Counselor Attentio?
Dan has a point in that if we are thinking about forgiving those grants, then we should ask the business community to do an application process because I'm not convinced that a lot of them were hurting as bad as they say they were hurting. I see even before we went to the yellow or blue or whatever it was, there were parking lots out there, the restaurants were completely full. And so let us see your financials. Let's vet them and and then make a determination then.
So we, but we are going to bring forth an ordinance that would spell that out.
Yeah, we need to spell it out. It was also my understanding that we would be paying back that half cent sales tax. I think we discussed it or actually, I think you said it. And then and then, you know, it was kind of my understanding with that whole five million that we were looking to help people and then all of a sudden it came back with these loans, grants and loans. And if you want to, if you want to get really technical, there was probably one nonprofit that we had in there that we forgave that that's probably more money than they've ever made in ten years. So I mean, so I mean, you could get really fussy about all this, but I think the intention that I had anyway was that that five million was to help. We can pay back that half cent sales tax and kind of forgive all of those, those, all of the loans. But we need to bring a ordinance forward for sure.
Well, we probably, we probably do need to have a discussion about the half cent sales tax and whether.
and whether, and maybe bring that to a fruition, because we've had an opportunity now, you know, we had last week Bill Swick talking about the Union and Main project and what it's going to take to finish that project. And we had a conversation today, tomorrow, or Thursday, I guess, is gonna make a presentation to the county commissioners with respect to, this is what we need, we're $2 million short, basically, of having the funds to do that. You know, they asked me, what's the source of funds for that? And I said, well, I'm not sure what the source is. We don't, the city doesn't have $2 million. But if we used part of that money that we got reimbursed, we might be able to come up with the $2 million but doesn't have to go back into the half cent sales tax fund. I mean, those are the kind of things I think we have to consider when we do that. Is that a good use of that money? The half cent sales tax fund has a balance there. We used that money well, I think it did its job. But when we took that money out of the half cent sales tax fund, we had no inkling whatsoever that we'd get reimbursed for one dime of that. It was done to save our businesses, and that's what happened with it. Gratuitously, it was reimbursed. Now, the question is, do we have to put it back in that fund? Or can we use it for a a purpose that will move the city forward? That's not not encumbered by the requirements of that half cent sales tax fund. And I think maybe the Union and Main master plan might be an area where that would be an appropriate use of funds, but we'll have to have that discussion.
Yeah, but you just said a while ago that that money from the federal government shouldn't be used for roads and streets and stuff. How are we gonna justify Union and Main if we do that?
This isn't money from the federal government. This is money that the CARES Act reimbursed us because we spent that money out of our our money. So when they pay it back to us, when they reimburse it for us, it's not limited in what we can use it for. When we spend the money, we don't get reimbursed if it's not authorized. But once it's reimbursed, we can spend that money for whatever we want to. The federal government no longer has any ties to that money. So that's, I think, what what we need to remember as a distinction. If we hadn't spent that money appropriately out of that half cent sales tax fund, it would not have reimbursed us for that if we hadn't used it to support our our small businesses. We did use it for that, we got reimbursed for that, and now the question is, what do we do with that money? We could put it back in the half cent sales tax fund, or we could put it to use on Union and Main or some other projects. I mean, that's that's the discussion I think we need to have.
Yeah, and the reality of it is, is that we have no idea what the, what we could use the the this American CARES or what hack money on. And the other thing that we're not taking into consideration is the infrastructure bill that the president's put forth. It's a $2 trillion bill that's, it's gonna get passed in some form. You know, when you're talking about Main Street and things like that, it seems to me that things are lining up that will be very advantageous to our streets and bridges and and these type of programs, so. Counsel, showing.
I just want to be real clear. We're gonna do a first reading on an ordinance about the forgiveness of business loans next week?
Oh, I doubt if we can put it together next week.
Okay.
Well, I I was gonna do a resolution saying we'll invite people to submit applications for review. We can, we can do that on Monday night. Yeah, yeah, of course. It's just a resolution. I'll put it together. The point, the point I wanted to make is that there are at least now three different pots of federal money. The first was the CARES Act. The second is the Rescue Plan Act, and the third is the Infrastructure Act. They're all gonna have different rules, so the money that we got reimbursed was under the CARES Act. And so we've got to look at those regs and say, okay, we got reimbursed the CARES Act. Can we take the CARES Act money you gave us and put it into a bank account called Economic Development? Because that's really what we're doing. That may be possible, it may not be possible, but we certainly want to check the federal statute on that. And I think there's a good argument that the Main Street project is an economic development project at its very core. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that could be argued on this. Yeah, I was referring to reimbursing our our 413 fund, the Economic Development Fund. You know, if it's possible, then that's up to you and the mayor, but it may not be legally possible. All right. Counsel winner?
Well, if you just want to look at the half cent sales tax, I mean, for economic development, we used we used it for the convention centers. So if you want, if you want to repair things for economic development, we can certainly use half cent sales tax for any of that. We don't need to get all shifty with $2 million.
Anybody else? Thank you. Pardon? Well, I think that, I I think that there's, there's so many things on the table right now, and you're absolutely right. I mean, the city attorney has told us on several occasions that on specific instances, city council can make a designation through on the half cent sales tax as long as it meets certain parameters, so you're right. You know, my argument is, is that even if you put the half cent sales tax money back, there's enough money coming in that all those things can be done anyway.
If you kind of look at how long we've been collecting that money and how how just, what do we bring in, seven million a year? How that, nine, how that can benefit? I mean, think if we spent all of that money on infrastructure, where we would be right now. It would be a totally different situation.
All right. So next Monday, we're gonna look at a resolution to have businesses apply to have their loans forgiven, and then we'll move past that to to an ordinance and conversations about that as we go on. Third on the agenda is city council goals and objectives. Ms. Lott?
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Mayor Gradisar. I was hoping to move this a little faster than I have, and I'll, and I'll start off with that apology that the what I'm sharing this evening is a culmination of your individual preferences with respect to priority in the colored dot exercise from the city council retreat on February the 27th. The PowerPoint slides I presented are in the form of take a note or an opportunity to just to send me a question and to take next steps. The PowerPoint I start with is a reminder of the charter of Article Three and City Council with respect to a resolution for five-year goals and one-year objectives. From there, I moved over immediately to the results of the city council and mayor priority results. Thank you. And you have a separate handout because I think it's a little difficult to see in the PowerPoint. So the handout of priority is is for me to show you how I captured all of your individual recommendations. You were, you had five colored different dots to distribute by priority order, and each one had a number on it for priority one, two, three, four, and five. And then after the conversation, you actually went and had an opportunity to place your priority preferences on different areas that were discussed for during the session. So what this looks like is under development, I actually itemized where there was individual comment about development. But just in general, there would have been three individuals who placed the second colored dot on on development, and so there you see the three under column two. There would have been one individual who placed the fourth colored dot where it said Revitalize Downtown. And I'm the one that grouped the Revitalize Downtown, the Build Homes, the Low Income Housing, the Aquatic Center, and the Half Cent Sales Tax, all under development as you as you had presented it in the day of discussion. So when I tallied up all your different colored dot preferences, development came out as number one priority with 13 different subtotals with colored dots. The infrastructure area that included just direct infrastructure without any subtitle, streets and the I-25 corridor, it ranked and came in second with nine colored dots presented. Image came in third, and you can see the distribution. There was also tourism included under under the image category. And when I tallied those dots, there came in as eight of you, so I ranked it as number three. Recreation came in with five different dots as a priority, it is ranked fourth. The budget deficit came in with three priority items and legislation changes and population growth. And I believe the one under legislation changes was with respect to council establishing the equivalent of of internal performance auditor or compliance auditor position. And so that ranked in at one, and then the population growth, separate item, ranked as one as well. And you know, I'm an old accountant by at heart, and so I had to make sure that the tally worked out. And there were seven council members plus the mayor with eight votes each with five of the priorities, and we did equal at the 40 place dots and 40 opportunities to vote. So the the next step is really this evening, where if you agree or accept the priorities of development, infrastructure, image, recreation, budget, legislation, and population growth in that order, there's an opportunity then for discussion of how you convert those priority focused areas into goal statements. And if that is a separate session, or we want a smaller group to do it, or you want to do this individually. But what I did for you tonight, for instance, in the next slide, please, is a reminder of the goals versus objectives being general, objectives are specific. And this is the same slide that we looked at the day of the city council retreat. And the next slide, please. And the next slide showed you the hierarchy of generally how the vision, goals fell under the vision and then objectives, and then key performance indicators and critical stats. CSF is escaping me, all I can see is the Colorado State Fair right now, I spent too many years there. Critical factors, success factors is CSF, but right now, Colorado State Fair came to mind. And then how we intend to measure the metrics with respect to collecting data that we can then be transparent and accountable to the goals once you arrive at them. And then the next slide, please. As a reminder, then, when we establish goals and we use the SMART goal technique, our goals should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant or realistic, as I know they are to be, and then timely really just means measurable. So do we want a goal that is the five years as required by the charter? Or do you want to do something ranging from, you know, one to five or something smaller in timeframe? And the next slide. So then what I went about doing is just making, they're just truly, it's my work, it's just suggestion, and it's a starting place, so it's not a blank piece of paper, and it's always easier than to, you know, to get those creative juices flowing and show someone, you know, you've sort of started on the right track, but you, you know, didn't quite capture what you were thinking. So I didn't want, I don't want to, to, you know, to do the work or to think, but I just for you, I just wanted you to have a starting place. So for instance, for the goal number one of development in different strategic plans and different city councils, that, you know, everything's on the internet, you can Google easily. Some of this work I presented is from Internet work, and, you know, R and D is rip off and duplicate when it, and when it's helpful to do. So some of that is what I've done here from the internet search, and others are the just that I created individually on my own. So for instance, to promote inclusive and sustainable economic growth is a potential goal. And there's four of them I listed, or promote robust transformational development, promote development through collaboration and innovation between both private and public sectors to create an attractive economic environment to support new development and redevelopment of the city for a resilient, strong economy and thriving neighborhoods. I'm sorry, neighborhoods. So opportunity to use any of those as a good starting point to what council collectively would like to see as a goal developed under what you've identified as the priority of development. I'll, I'll pause there. Comments, questions, direction?
I think this is fantastic. I think you've done a great job on on getting this started. I believe the first question we gotta ask and we need to talk about, obviously, we had 40 votes when we had our our retreat, and I took defeat on the budget deficit. It's not one of the top four goals, so I'm not, I'm gonna shut up about that. But does everybody agree on the top four goals as something that we should focus on? I'll leave that open for conversation. Counsel, showing.
Read my mind. Laura, this is an awful lot of work, thank you. And the note I wrote to myself was, this is somebody that would be writing a master's paper to to truly do all this stuff, to sit down and do this work. Where, to me, this is a one-year project with lots of committees to to define what's sustainable economic development. Well, hell, to me, that's a year. And I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of the importance of it, but the reality of being able to do these things, guys, is gonna take a year and everybody's lot of time. And my hope is we can simplify this. I mean, truly, I felt like I was going to grad school again when I was starting to read all this stuff with how you set up the organizations, and Laura, God love you because you're so much smarter than me. But I don't know if everybody realized, this is, to me, this has got to be a lot simpler or it's unachievable. I mean, this is a master's paper on how you get a city to do all this stuff. And so I, how do we make it simple? How do we do a couple of things? Maybe we just pick one or something, but to try and go through four, I think, is impossible. And I remember, Ray, you were there one time, we did something like this before. Hell, nobody really knew what the heck they were doing. And I don't know that anything got achieved. It was a few years ago, there was, we were gonna create a namesake for the city. What is it? We create something you remember them by, Homer Heroes, and they were, there was a big push that you maybe have been on council. Man, they went through a lot of time, and Jenny Ackerman did all this research and all this kind of stuff. And you know what happened? Probably basically nothing. So I'm worried that this is so complicated that nothing's gonna happen. And I think we need help on how to make it simple. Maybe we get the university involved, I don't know, but to me, this is a a big project to break this stuff down realistically. That's all I got, thank you.
I think that you're letting it give you nightmares over over, over nothing. But obviously, obviously, we have to remember that the whole purpose of this is to create a vision for city council. So it's, it's, we we took the time out, and we said, these four things are the most important things to us as a body. It's been identified, that was the first step, correct? Now, out of those four things, we gotta do exactly what you're talking about, is to dial in in those four areas, what as a city council our vision is and what we hope to accomplish over a five-year period.
Give me a timeframe, Mark, when do you think you can get that done? That's what concerns me, the time.
Elected to work, so I'm ready to go to work, and I'm ready to do everything I can do to to instill this and to accept it and to move forward with a vision. Counsel Flores?
You know, on the surface, you know, you get the feeling that Bob is getting that it's kind of overwhelming. But as you look and you dial in on all of these various things, they're all in process already. they're all in process already. If you look at the I-25 corridor, that's the primary objective we've been working through ACOG for the last two years. I mean, that, that's already rolling downhill. The streets, I mean, we, we've begun that process, and you're starting to see, you know, you're starting to see the, the fruits there of, of that street utility and the other money that was interjected in there. Revitalizing downtown, we've got three developers that are working on three projects right now. And I, I don't, I, I think they're all going to go through. The Aquatic Center, I mean, that's a priority of not only the Harp Authority, but also Pueblo Urban Renewal, pardon me? They've got no votes? No, well, I'm just saying, it's already, it's, it's already work, it's already moving And then, we, we're already seeing an increase in, in the development of houses through the permitting. We've got, we're, we're moving ahead a lot. We've got more permits now than we did at this time last year, even before the COVID. So I, I, I just think that there's a lot of things that are already in motion, and we just need to push them along.
Counselor Aguilera? Use your mic.
Real quick, you got to ask yourself, what have we done the last two years?
Let's see, 2019 was municipal, municipalization, and 2020 was COVID.
So?
There you go.
Was that it, Ray? Yes.
Was that it, Ray?
Counselor Warner?
Okay. So the deal is, if you want all of this to happen quicker, money solves everything. So the issue is money. It's always been money. That's how we clean up our neighborhoods, that's how we provide infrastructure, that's how we get the higher paying jobs and more desirable place to live. So it's, it's always about money. So it's always a circular conversation, because the conversation is always about money.
Anybody else? Okay, so how I read this is that what we should do now as a group is take this, look at it, and write down what we think in each of these areas would be a specific goal that we'd want to accomplish. Is that not correct? And then come back and have another meeting on what we would do there?
I believe that it would be a, a goal statement. And so I gave you maybe potential starting points for developing goal statements, and they're each individually separate on their own, and you could use any one of them and, and make them your own by adding to it or subtracting from it, or, or massaging it somehow. Each one of them only needs, you know, one or two statements there. And then underneath there would be the objectives, such as the Aquatic Center, the objective for the year, oh my gosh, we finally got the Dole Grant. And it would be for the design work to be completed, and for it to provide you the report for, you know, for consideration of the next step. That's an objective, as one of you already said, was already in the works, and all it would take would be to be, to reduce it to writing underneath a goal, and it's an objective that will take place. So you are right in creating goal statements.
So here we are, here we are at the crossroads. We either as a group decide to move forward with goals and a strategic vision for city council, or as a group, we scrap it because we're, we're never going to get it done, it's no, it's a bad idea, and, and it's a nightmare. So what we have to decide right now, before we go any further, is are we going to do it, or are we not going to do it? Counselor Flores? Counselor Schilling?
I mean, yes, but somebody's got to help me through it and make this simple for me, because it could get real overly complicated finding words, but I'm a, yeah. Teach me something.
Counselor Tencio?
I'm a yes, in that if these are the goals, and they're fine, because they're broad statements, basically, promote inclusive and sustainable economic growth. The objective is, how are we going to achieve that goal? Well, each one of us is going to go to economic development meetings. What other ways do we achieve this particular goal? And two members of the council are going to be on urban renewal, yada, yada, the, the whole thing, do you see what I'm saying? So we, these goals are just fine, but what, what we lack now is, how are we going to achieve that specific goal? That's what objectives are. They're specific, they're measurable, they're narrow, so let's narrow it down, and if these are the goals that we want to support.
Well, these are Laura Solano's writing here. This isn't city councils. So she's giving us a thought starter for creating our own goals. Now, whether we adopt it, I mean, if we like what she wrote down, then we like what she wrote down. But what I'm saying is, we move forward, is that we have to develop our own, and, and agree on that and move forward for that, and have it our own. But you're absolutely right on the specificity and the objectives and so on.
That's all that's needed, that was how do we achieve these particular goals? If these are the goals that we are going to, to, yeah.
Great point. Counselor Brown?
Well, I, I think a lot of these are in process. Some, we're just moving along on them, and they're going to, they're going to have.
Counselor Aguilera?
Well, I think we need to, to go, to go like hell and see how much we can accomplish, and if, if we don't accomplish anything, it's nobody's fault but our own. But I think we, we need to move forward, we need to always do as much as we possibly can in order to make this a better place to live. So I'm very much in favor.
Counselor Warner?
I don't know. Laura said the word massage. I think this is all one big massage, but again, it all comes back to money, but.
Well, that should be your goal.
To, what, a massage, to massage it all? I could use a different word, but I will not.
So are you in support of us moving forward?
Yes.
Are you in favor of us moving forward? And that's what, Laura, that's what we'll do. We'll spend the next week, two weeks, working on this, get all your ideas turned in to Laura, and we'll go from there. Thank you. You did, this is fantastic work. Fantastic work, and great job. Oh, we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is vacant buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, mayor. Councilor Alef asked me to, to work on this project, and I was delighted to do so. He shared with me the ordinance from the city of Trinidad, which was fine, but really not up to the city of Pueblo standards. And so I've kind of started from scratch and, and came up with this. It, it's a work in progress, meaning, you know, it can be changed or clarified by city The first page is definitions. On page two, I, I think the key definition is definition eleven vacant. There are properties in the city that are owned by landlords, and people move in and out, and someone moves, and the owner tries to get a new tenant in. They would not be subject to this. The property has to be not legally occupied for at least ninety days in order for this regulation to apply. So it's either that, or one hundred and eighty days, which can be non-continuous in any calendar, any year, I mean to say calendar, any year. The, I think the most important part of, of this ordinance is the registration item. We have a lot of vacant buildings in the city, and we, we really don't know who's in charge. We've got, obviously, an owner of record, but we don't know if it's been subject to a foreclosure. We don't know if the property is part of some formal or informal probate process where the owners have passed away, and it's passed on to somebody, some heir somewhere. But we don't know who's in charge of the property, and who has responsibility for the property. And I think this registration component is, is really the most important aspect of the ordinance. That way, the police and fire, code enforcement, will know who to contact if, if there's a problem. And so that's, that's what this registration will help with. Section four dash nine dash three says that if it's vacant, or if it gives the appearance of being vacant, you, you've got to take care of the property, you've got to maintain the property. Section four dash nine dash four imposes security requirements on the owners. They, they've got to keep it secure to prevent unlawful occupancy by homeless folks, or, or gangs, or whatever. We are required to have an appeal process. Due process requires notice, an opportunity to be heard, and then an appeal. So the people in charge of this can be one of the following four people, either the mayor through his staff, the fire chief, the police chief, or the director of the health department. They all have authority to enforce this ordinance. Appeals would be decided by the mayor or the designee of the mayor. In section nine dash, four dash nine dash eight, there's an annual registration fee of five hundred dollars. The next section provides that if a responsible party, whether whoever's in charge of this property, whether it's the owner, it's the heirs of the owner, it's a bank that got it through foreclosure, someone holding a certificate of purchase from a foreclosure action, or an owner or bank that has a certificate of redemption through the foreclosure process, they're all liable. And if they don't maintain it, keep it secure, keep it registered, they commit a class one municipal offense, which is a fine of up to one thousand dollars and jail of up to three hundred and sixty-four days. There are other sections of the code that apply to these homes. We have a property maintenance, maintenance code. We've got a dangerous buildings code. Section four dash nine dash ten says, this vacant building code does not do away with the others. You're still, you can still be charged under the property maintenance code, or under the, the dangerous buildings code. So that's my attempt. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kogosi. You know, I made sure that I brought this forward so we could have a discussion about it before it ever got to, got, went any further. The big deal to me is, is the registrations of the vacant buildings. I think that's huge. We have all these buildings sitting around. We, all we hear continuously is griping about how the buildings are falling apart, how the city's not taking care of anything. I really like the registration fee. Registration fee can go into who knows what. I think you can use that money to help in your mitigation when you're, you're tearing these houses down, or moving forward in some way to deal with that. But the last thing we want is somebody just sitting around, not doing anything with a house that's empty, and whatever. I mean, we need to, we need to get movement on the part of these people that own these properties to sell them, get rid of them, and get them open. Counselor Warner?
Well, you still need political will, and you need people willing to follow through. Hassan is, is a big one. You know, he made an agreement with the city that he was going to tear down those houses around his mansion, and put in a duplex or fourplexes. That's because we had given him an ultimatum, I think back in twenty seventeen, that the city was going to demo him unless he took care of him. And he still, he still hasn't abided by that. We have Douglas Bruce, that I don't think anybody's going to throw in jail. So, you know, there needs to be political will behind this, and, and, and some teeth. I mean, you can say that we're going to do this all you want, and we already have the ordinances in place to do all of this anyway. It's just a matter of doing it. I think another good place to start would be, say, take all of the property that we have that's vacant from a demolition, that has a demolition lien on it, and those are going to be a hundred grand and up, probably around there. We passed a resolution back in twenty seventeen that said that any kind of city lien is due at tax time. So we can foreclose on those liens, on those demo loans, and get all of those properties sold and reestablished. We can put sideboards on them where they have to be single-family homes, or, or you can't hold on to it as a rental property. Well, I guess, I guess, I don't know, but there's all kinds of things we could look at, but sideboards on there that, that you had to produce another single-family home within eighteen months. I mean, that'd be a good way to kind of get started, but as far as requiring Douglas Bruce to pay five hundred dollars a year, I mean, he's not going to do anything. So it's not really taking care of the real problem, properties. Because again, like I said, if you want to start finding people a thousand dollars a day, which you, you can, that's going to get the attention of a lot of these people. Douglas Bruce is going to sue us, Hassan will probably sue us. I know the federal government just foreclosed on their liens with, I can't think of his name right now, but all of those homes are being really established, reestablished. The one on Grand that was the toilet house, do you remember the toilet house? Mourning, Robert Mourning. The federal government foreclosed on all of his liens, and all of those properties are, are turning over. That one on, right behind the poppy seed is being remodeled. So I think he had maybe seven or eight properties that sat there forever. The one on Grand is done, it's beautiful. So it's going to take, it's, it's going to take that, you're going to have to say, look, we're foreclosing on the liens, we're, we're done. Not, oh, hey, can you register your property and give us five hundred dollars? Hassan doesn't care about that. Douglas Bruce doesn't care about that. Five hundred dollars is nothing to these people.
Counselor Aguilera?
Well, the classic example for me is the building down here on Union, on the corners of Union and B Street, and it's across the street from the Homes Hardware Building, which is supposed to be in, in development. But there's been parts of that building that have been falling on the street for years, and we have. and we have never done a single thing about it. I mean, we allow that, that building, every time it rains, parts of that building fall down. That's just the situation that we're in. We just don't do anything about it. And so consequently, people, uh, refuse to repair or fix up or plan or do anything. And, uh, it's, I don't think it's their fault. I think it's our fault that we haven't done anything about it.
That's all. Counselor Tensio?
On its face, I, I probably think it's a good idea, but where does this fit in with my idea of licensing landlords? And, uh, o- other cities do that. I have ordinances from Kansas City and from Boulder in that, uh, where would this fit in? Cause I, I think this is fine, but I don't think it goes far enough. I think, uh, because, uh, rental properties are the problem. You know, when, when I worked for the health department, people, uh, uh, this one instance was where I started enforcing the regulations against burrito vendors. If you remember a long time ago, people would go around with their little, uh, coolers with burritos and they would sell to all over the city. So I started, uh, enforcing against them. And, uh, uh, my Latino community started getting on me. Well, they're only trying to make a living and yada, yada, you know, and so, well, I understood. But then, uh, a Latino business owner came up and says, hey, I gotta put in all of this equipment and I gotta pay fees and I gotta pay licenses and they don't. You know, why? So the same thing with landlords in this town, their businesses, why don't, why aren't they licensed? Why aren't they regulated like every other business is supposed to be regulated? This is, uh, this is all fine and good, but I think we ought to go a lot further and, and make sure that, uh, and, and along with that, I always told people, you know, ninety-seven percent of the people out there are only trying to do a good job when I was in, uh, inspecting restaurants. They're proud of their business, they want to do, put out a good product, they want to do good. The reason you're paying me the amount of money that you're paying me to inspect restaurants is for that two or three percent that are messed up, just like the police department. Ninety-seven percent of the people out there are trying to do good. Three or four percent of the people out there that are doing, uh, bad things are the reason we have a police department. Same thing with the fire department, that, you know, uh, there are a lot of people out there. Most everybody wants to keep their houses and businesses up to, up to code. And the ones that don't, that's why we have them inspected by the fire department. So, uh, I think we ought to go a little bit further and see if we can, uh, incorporate license of landlords. What's the license fee? Fifty-five dollars? Fifty-five dollars a year?
It's fifty for a business license.
Yeah, fifty for a business license. Who can't absorb that if you're making, uh, ninety, nine hundred, eleven hundred dollars a month on a rental property? You know, uh, not only that, but, and I, I wouldn't go as far, some, some cities are literally inspecting every time a la- uh, a leasing leaves a, uh, uh, rental, that the city goes in and inspects it, make sure that it's up to code for the next leasing to go in. I wouldn't go that far, but I would go as far as to put in some minimum regulations as to why some of these rental properties are such bad shape. I know of one little family, uh, who lived in this one house for two years straight, two winters in a row. They didn't have a furnace because the landlord wouldn't put it in. And they had no choice but to stay there because they couldn't go anyplace else. They didn't have the, they didn't have, uh, money to put up front for another rental property. So they had, these poor things had to stay there. They had, uh, electric heaters in every room. They're lucky they lived through that damn place, you know? Uh, we should have minimum standards for them too. I think this is okay, but I think we ought to go a lot further.
Counselor Shewin?
I'm not smart enough to go further tonight on that one. What importance, what's important to me is, and I thought Lori brought it up, probably ought to be the Doug Bruce ordinance. But the key is, there's a difference between, I think Lori mentioned foreclosure, which I, Dan Crick, I don't think, we can't foreclose on it because they don't owe us any money, correct? Well, hang on, and then, then let him finish, please.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, uh, we, you can foreclose on a city lien, a, a demolition lien, a, a wheat lien, a trash lien. The problem, of course, is that you're in the priority of title, meaning that if there's somebody with a lien ahead of you, and you want to take the property, you're going to have to pay the prior lien.
Right, which becomes ineffective. So then the second thing is the tax sale. Is, is that a better effective way to put it on the tax sale? Then Doug Bruce is going to, at some point in time, he'll die and the city will collect his money back when the property's transferred. I just, to me, the strength we've got is in the tax sale, there's nothing else we can do.
Every year we certify, uh, liens against taxes and we historically get payments when they pay their taxes, they pay that lien off. But I, I sign releases all the time because we've gotten payments for those liens from the, uh, county treasurer. They come in and paid them.
Two people that were mentioned here tonight are paying whatever liens they?
Their, their, their properties don't have any liens on.
Okay. But we can lien, then we can do the tax lien on the vacant properties on Bruce's and things like that. Okay, so that's where our power is. Okay. And one little short thing though, if a bank owns it, how are you going to throw a bank in jail? We can't do that, I guess we'll just keep charging them money?
Yeah, I, I've been thinking about that, uh, for about seven years. And I don't have the answer. You can't put a bank in there.
Well, you know, it's federal requirement that everybody signs a lead based paint when you sell the property and, uh, banks are supposed to do that and they could care less. So, I mean, sometimes you can't force them to do anything, but I would think a lien would, would get their edge. That's all I've got, thank you.
Counselor Flores?
I, I was doing a little bit of homework, uh, yesterday on some of this stuff. And there are cities, uh, especially dealing with foreclosures and financial institutions, where the city of Chula Vista, California, they actually put an ordinance together and said that banks, the minute that they file foreclosure, uh, the city then demands that they take care of the property. Whereas now, a foreclosure could take six, eight months. Uh, and, and you would think the bank would be concerned about the property, but they, they, they don't really take responsibility till, till after the redemption period is up and they, they take title. But that might be an example, uh, and that was just one idea, there's so many others, of a city filing an ordinance, forcing financial institutions and banks, that their responsibility to take care of, clean up that property starts from the day they file the foreclosure. And instead of waiting till the tail end, I mean, that's just a one minor example, but there's got to, there, there's so many more. Because the whole theory is that property owners have a lot of rights that we can't just steamroll over, but they also have responsibilities. So technically, that's where we should focus our energy, is on the responsibility piece. And how can we tighten that up, uh, to make people, uh, you know, clean up their properties and make sure that they're, uh, uh, that, that they're in compliance, uh, you know, with all the ordinances?
Yeah, this is obviously address, meant to address a different problem. We have ways to take care of the cleanups or the, the boarding. This is vacant property. If you've just got a property you're setting vacant, you've got to register it. Whether you keep it pristine condition or not, if it's vacant, you have to register it. Now, the difference between this ordinance and the one in Trinidad is in Trinidad, as long as you registered it, they, they waived the registration fee and they waived the annual renewal fee unless you filed the renewal fee late. Here, there's none of that waiver in there. This will po- impose a financial obligation upon, among the property owners. And I guess you just need to be aware of that, that's what's, what's going to happen.
That's it. Lori?
Yeah, um, uh, you also might want to talk to, uh, Karen Wilson when it comes to the registration of vacant properties. Cause this was kind of a, this was kind of a trend, um, like in twenty eleven, twenty twelve. And a lot of cities that started this just ended it because it was just too much labor and it, and, and it, it just, it just didn't, didn't go anywhere, so they just stopped it. Uh, Trinidad, there's some people in town that got excited over Trinidad because they had this young kid that came in as an intern. And he said, oh, let's do this vacant property register thing. So I, I don't know where they're at on that now. I think that started in like twenty sixteen or something, but, um, cities that have done it have eighty-six did. Um, so I think we need a little more research on that. As far as the foreclosures, uh, you're getting paid on those foreclosures. So if the city is boarding those up, those are liens and you'll get paid on those liens when, when they're sold. They have to, yeah, Dan's shaking his head no, but.
No, it's, that's true, but that's not true because.
The bank has to pay it off for, for clear, clear and free title.
The bank wipes out all junior liens in the foreclosure, including the city's lien. As a junior lienor, we have the right to pay the bank off. But if we don't do that, all junior liens are wiped out except.
It's a cleanup, it's a cleanup lien, it's a mechanics lien, it should stay on there.
No, it's wiped out in the foreclosure. All junior liens are wiped out in foreclosures, except property tax.
Huh, okay. And then fire, uh, I'm glad we have the fire chief here because, uh, uh, one thing that I've been kind of, um, harping on is that when, when a property is on fire, the city needs to be notified im- immediately because, uh, it, it's, it's kind of like what Dennis just said about foreclosure. So, you know, there's a fire next door and then people think, oh, I'm sure the city knows there's a fire, they're going to take care of it. And then pretty soon a year goes by and still nothing's happened. Six, another six months go by, people are living there that aren't supposed to be there and the house catches some fire again. So it's just kind of this constant thing until we get, we get it boarded up. It can be four or five years before the thing gets boarded up. So, um, I don't think we have enough fires to get behind. It seems like it'd be an easy phone call to code enforcement to get that secured right away after a fire. Okay, is that, is that a new procedure or, okay, all right, cause we didn't do that before. So that's good. I was going to say one more thing about the fires. Uh, there are some cities that, um, uh, and I've, I've mentioned this before in the past, but they, they have a, um, an ordinance that if the house is on, if the house catches fire, the insurance company cannot release funds until that demolition is complete. So they, the city holds funds in escrow. So say that the cost of the demo in escrow, or say if you've got a twenty thousand dollar, um, to replace, because most people just insure the home for replacement value. And the replacement value, there's some number in there for demolition. So say if they're, they're setting aside thirty grand for demolition, the, the city holds that in escrow until it's complete. And then they release the, the rest of the funds to the owner. So say if you've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollar loan on the, or, or it's insured for a hundred and thirty, I'm just throwing out numbers here. The owner would end up getting a hundred. So that exists out there. Dan's thinking here.
Well, you're making Dennis look funny too and he's old.
I shouldn't quite understand what you said.
There's cities that hold in escrow a certain percentage for a demo. So if, so say if you were, say if that was a, a, an ordinance or, or a law in, in the city of Pueblo, an insurance company could not release funds to the owner, all of it. They'd have to give, say, whatever portion they have for that demolition or to raise the property in, in escrow.
That's not the case. You know, the city doesn't have an insurable interest in a process like that. I mean, if, if I own a building, uh, I'm going to have coverage to replace the building and I'll have an additional amount, which called debris removal.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
But that, that's solely dealing with me. The city has no insurable interest in my property.
Well, they can, they hold it in escrow until that's, that's done. Cause it's, it's making, it's making that owner responsible for debris cleanup.
In most cases, it's not the city, it's usually a mortgage lender or a lien holder, uh, that has an insurable interest. And so their name will appear on the check. And, uh, a bank most certainly would force you to remove the debris and clean the thing up and replace their, their collateral.
Well, that's, that's, that doesn't happen. People walk away with insurance money all the time and just leave the house burned up. Uh, um, Spruce is a perfect example of that. Uh, there's one on Court that's a perfect example of that, so that happens all the time.
City or any kind of government being, uh, a lien holder unless they, they were the ones that lent the money.
I didn't say a lien holder, I said an escrow holder. They hold it in escrow. But, you know, I can, I can find these ordinances for you and you can, you can read them.
Well, my experience is that the insurance companies, they're not going to part with their money until the work is done. So they're not going to pay anybody, they're not going to turn loose to that money until.
That's not true, that's not, that's.
That's not true?
No, it's not. Cause the, actually the one on Court, they had to threaten the guy that they were going to, I think it was the, um, fire department actually was going to, they ended up threatening, this one Jerry was, um, city manager, ended up threatening to open up the case again to, to get him to remove the debris. So, no, they walk away all the time.
Well, the.
He already has money.
The owner might walk away, but the insurance company is not going to pay the owner all the money for the house. If he's got replacement cost coverage, the insurance company is not going to pay that replacement cost coverage.
Not if you don't replace it. You know, you, you insure it for whatever you want and, and if it's demoed, it's like a car or hail damage or something.
Well, can you bring us that copy?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll read it and see.
Well, last thing, uh, one of the goals that we talked about was, that Laura put together was development, redevelopment of our neighborhoods. If we have this kind of money coming in from, uh, people that are registering vacant houses, plus if we had a, uh, landlord, uh, landlords, uh, get a license, we would have money to redevelop our neighborhoods. So this would be an objective to the goal of redeveloping neighborhoods. So this is an idea of how we accomplish redevelopment. This is one of the ways we would do it by, this is a specific thing that we could do to it, to, uh, to achieve that goal by, uh, having a, a fee for buildings that are, that are abandoned and for landlords to be, uh, we've got that, where we have the money to do it.
Good point.
I got this thing.
Hold on.
Okay.
As far as this ordinance goes, are you okay with bringing it forward?
No, I don't, I don't think it's doing anything. No.
Okay, uh, Counselor Aguilar? Counselor Brown? Counselor Tensio? If we expand it? Counselor Shellen? Counselor Flores? Okay, and, and Mayor, I would ask that, uh, before we move forward on it, that, uh, I think Counselor Winter brought up a good point with code enforcement. If this is something that's just going to inundate them and they're not going to do anything. If, if it comes to this, then she makes a good point.
Your problem properties aren't going to comply, they don't comply now, so they're not going to comply for five hundred dollars.
So I mean, can we just have that conversation?
Sure, and I'm not sure code enforcement would be the place we'd want these vacant houses.
Okay, but you'll get that figured out.
Yeah, I mean, it could probably cost, we'll, we'll try to see whether, you know, obviously, too, you know how many vacant houses there are, you don't know what kind of burden it's going to be. So, but I mean, it might require another staff person somewhere, for instance, to, to take care of this registration process, uh, and, uh, to follow along. But yeah, we'll try to make an estimate of that, what, what it might cost to implement this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dan? Just to follow up on, uh, Council President Attencio's, uh, comment on licensing landlords. Yeah, that, that's done, but that would be a separate ordinance. And if Mayor instructs me, I'll, I'll prepare that ordinance as well. But it's really not related to, to vacant buildings. We've got the single subject requirement, uh, under the charter and so, uh, it's, it's really a separate item. And one other thing, the courts have said that fees, uh, registration fees, uh, should be limited to, uh, the cost of regulating and maintaining records. You can't charge a fee and then treat the excess amount like it's general tax revenue for other purposes. So we've got to keep, keep that. for other purposes. So we've got to keep, keep that in mind as well. Thank you. Counsel Winter?
I, I actually have two more things. So can we pull up all the properties that we have demo liens on?
Yeah, I, that's, that's going to be a work session. I think that, that's coming up. Yeah, that's going to be a work session. Because I, I know Counseler, you've been working on this and, and so, yeah, I, I think there's been.
It's the only thing on the agenda for next Monday night.
Well, that's, that's the demolition plan with respect to properties where we have demolition.
Right, there's just a vacant.
That's got to be a handful.
Oh, oh, well, there's, I, I think it's more than a handful, but still, I mean, it, it would be nice to get those properties reestablished rather than have them grow weeds and, and collect illegal dumping and, I mean, to get, to get, to foreclose on those hundred thousand dollar liens, those, those, those people are not paying off those liens every year. For a big, I mean, a lot's not worth a hundred grand in a lot of these places, so. What are you laughing at? Everybody wants to get out of here, but. Right, right. So they're not, they're not paying this off at tax time. They've been sitting there for years. I mean, Larry knows property on the, on the east side that's been sitting there forever from a demo. So it'd be nice to just get a whole list of those and get those sold. Get them foreclosed and on and get them sold and get them reestablished.
Lori, I agree with you. There is, there was two properties, when you come over the Eighteenth Street Bridge going west, there was two properties there, both of them, the roofs fell in and finally it took ten years to get the liens and everything else secured. So, you know, we, there may be some realities of wanting to move real fast. Someplace like those two houses, it took them forever to clear those liens and get them off the books. So I'm all for doing what we can, but there may be some ugly realities that doesn't happen when we want it to. But I'm all for doing what we can to get it done. I just know that nothing's going to get done in a day.
Well, no, nothing ever gets done in a day, not, not in government.
Patience is a virtue.
Do you have something else?
Yeah, I do. So, um, I have a, a letter that, um, I would like councils to support. Um, it would be a resolution to support this. This is for a grant for Keating School. Um, it's a grant with the state historical fund, history color, Colorado for fifteen grand. And it just says, the city of Pueblo, or the, the Pueblo City Council strongly supports the restoration and adaptive reuse of historic Keating School located at twenty fifteen Orman in Pueblo. This historic structure is a beautiful two-story building located on, on almost a full block in historic area of Pueblo. Keating School was built in nineteen twenty-seven and served as a junior high school until the early eighties. After that date, it was used as an alternative school, school offices, a daycare and, um, other short time uses. It has, has now been vacant for over ten decade, or over a decade with broken windows and a leaky roof. The plans for the building will be for mixed use with residential units, business offices and commercial kitchen. An additional space on the block will be sold for single-family homes. So that's a big area right behind Keating that they plan on selling off a single-family home build. Pueblo City Council encourages the preservation of Pueblo's past in its historic buildings. So we strongly urge you to support this planning grant to create the CAD measurements for the building. So I would just like the city to, uh, city council to support a letter of support for the grant.
When's it due?
Um, she wants to get this all turned in within the next three weeks.
So it can be a, you want a resolution?
I don't even know if we need that. I think, um, I could just forward the letter to your office if everybody's okay with it.
That's going to be a private development?
Yes, yes. There's a, uh, yeah, it's a nonprofit. Corinne Kaler is on it and Beverly.
But the development is private?
It's just supporting a grant for fifteen grand for, um, from the state.
Nonprofit is going to build, uh, single-family homes and, uh, uh, commercial development and all that other stuff?
No, Larry, I think they're trying to work with private individuals too.
Okay.
To get the funds to get something done. I, I don't know the exact mix of nonprofit and profit, but I certainly don't have a problem with a grant to let them get a grant to.
This goes back about two years, but we, we supported that project a couple of years ago when they started looking at Keating. There was Corinne Kaler and another lady that's been really involved in. Yeah, I would, I would say yes, I'd support the.
There, um, also on that committee is, um, the dude that, um, had, had done Idlewise, Idlewise in Colorado Springs. I don't think I said that. Ivy Wild in Colorado Springs.
So Dennis, you're okay?
Yeah.
Bob? Larry?
I'm okay. You're okay?
Okay. So does it need?
We're all okay.
Does it need to be a resolution, um, Dan, or can it, can the letter just go to the office?
So, you know, it doesn't have to be.
I didn't think so. So Nick, can I just forward, can I just forward this to your office and then, um, Larry can sign it or? Okay.
Anybody else? Let's go watch some basketball.